Call meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is item 14. That's to authorize Ms. Orange to, uh, the budget. So, Ms. Orange, if you would, take the lead on this.
I need authorization to advertise for a public hearing to amend the current year budget, which is fiscal year '21. The second half of the CARES Act funds came in in August, so that was after we had already approved this budget. So, we've got that, plus some other amounts that came in, and we just need to amend our budget to get everything in line before year end.
And if you got down to 16, is the date for it?
This will be at the June Board of Supervisors meeting. This is the current fiscal year.
Okay, I'm with you. All right. So, we need to authorize this because the amount increased. We need to authorize her to advertise that for June 6th, with a regular meeting in June. So, do we have a motion to authorize Ms. Orange to do that?
So moved.
Has Mr. Scrubby made a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herrick, second. Any discussion? I'll prepare what I'm saying. I oppose motion carried.
That requires any time we go 1% above the pre-budget. That's why that's required.
All right, it is, uh... But keeping, uh, Ms... There she is. You're always hiding from us. Same thing. Back and forth.
Please appropriate $15,105.98 to Commonwealth Attorney's Federal Asset Forfeiture Fund, miscellaneous expenses, 18-22100-5600 for monies received and deposited at the Treasurers Office. Appropriate $807 to Sheriff's Office Repair and Maintenance of Equipment, 31200-3310 for reimbursement received and deposited. And appropriate $96,372.53 to Sheriff's Office Operations Safe Schools Grant Salaries, 31260-1100 for reimbursements received and deposited. And that's all the appropriations.
Okay. We have a motion to make the appropriations as described by the suit.
Someone, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ditchman made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Scrubby, second. I'll prepare what I'm saying. Aye? Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
Please transfer $5,000 for non-park recreation, uniform, equipment, supplies, 71310-6013, and $3,500 from special services, 71310-3170, to appropriate a total of $8,500 to park golf course equipment and supplies, 7110-8101, and transfers $2,757.86 from Treasurers, printing of tax tickets, 12410-3500, to office supplies, 12410-6001. And that is all the transfers.
Do we have a motion to make the transfers as described?
Who's tax tickets? Was that a second billing or something?
No, she has money available in her tax tickets, and she's going to transfer it to her office supplies. I think she said it was to purchase a printer. I don't know if she gave me that. It was something she had asked for that got turned out maybe with CARES Act. So, she was wanting to buy it out of her remaining tax ticket. I don't have the name of that printer.
That's okay. I just wondered if it sent second notices out.
Or it was a money counter or something. I don't remember exactly. Because we thought one thing, and the other one wasn't, but... And that was for the other item that went up, and she said...
All right. I need a motion to make the transfers as described.
Someone?
Mr. Ditchman made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ditchman, second. I'll prepare what I'm saying. Aye? Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
And please accept Sheriff's Office Commonwealth Attorney's CCJS Body worn Camera Program Grant, 21-A8660-VC21. And if accepted, please establish budget code for body worn cameras, 31355-8203.
Do we have a motion on the burdens?
I make the motion, Mr. Ditchman.
I said make a motion, but we have a second.
And I'll second that motion.
Mr. Scrubby, second. I'll prepare what I'm saying. Aye? Aye. Oppose?
Motion carried. Can I ask a question about the cameras? Anyway, now...
Sure, next.
If we do get those cameras through the grant, is the state, Virginia, going to require us to have another attorney to monitor those cameras?
That is correct, according to legislation.
Is it? It's already passed? So, they're basically going to force us to get the cameras anyway? Is that how it is?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. Is there not one of our attorneys that is qualified to do that already? I mean, do we have to hire somebody, or is there already? Do we already have somebody? You know?
I don't want to give you opposite questions, so I don't know.
That's something we need to think about, yeah.
But it looked like in the state budget, you know, that was posted, I guess May 3rd, that there may have... The way I looked at the budget, the Commonwealth Attorney's Office has been approved for one new attorney and one new, uh, like secretary, uh, legal assistant, top position. And Commonwealth Attorney's Office has been approved for an additional person as well. I mean, Commissioner of Revenue. And, you know, those two, I noticed, look like they were...
Through the Congress.
Through the Congress.
Just imagine they'll be able to...
And I believe there's an agreement, if I read it correctly, of course, I'm not an attorney, but, uh, it looked like you could do an agreement with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and put that in by July 1st on how that's going to be done. But, um, like I said, I may be misinterpreting.
That's something we need to keep a lookout, I think. Because that's going to be another entirely highly in position.
Well, it's not... It's unfunded mandate. I've always got a problem with that, and it happens a lot. So, make you do it, and you have to pay for it yourself. All right. Uh, thank you, Pam. Next item is your appointments and any equipment.
You have one applicant in your file, Dirk, for housing authority. Beverly Kraus has applied.
Do we have any nominations for the housing authority? What's her last name was against the number four here?
Kraus.
Kraus? Deborah Kraus?
Beverly.
Beverly. Beverly. I couldn't... I was trying to see it here, and I don't...
Then you're getting your file.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Why, there it is, right on top. How could I miss it? All right. Do we have any nominations for the, uh, housing authority?
All nominated, Ms. Beverly Kraus.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I think the nomination ceases, but by acclamation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herrick, second. Any discussion? I'll prepare what I'm saying. Aye? Aye. Oppose? So, Ms. Kraus will be served. Our County District One Behavioral Health.
You have one applicant in your file, you're from Joanna Eads.
She did a letter, didn't she?
No, it's in there, too.
What is it? Okay. I've seen the letters, so...
Her applications in her packet.
All right. All right. Do we have any nominations for the County District One Behavioral Health, uh, Behavioral Services Board? Do we have any nominations?
All nominated, Joanna Eads.
This Eads has been nominated. Any other nominations?
I wish Chairman, I will vote that nomination ceases, and we vote by acclamation.
Do we have a motion to nomination cease? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Herrick, second. I'll prepare what I'm saying. Aye? Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
At the Courthouse Facilities Committee, you have one applicant from Tim Bradshaw. He has a letter on your tablet.
Are there any nominations for the Courthouse Facilities Committee?
All nominated, Tim Bradshaw.
All right. Any other nominations? If not, entertain a motion, nomination ceases, but by acclamation.
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Scrubby made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ditchman, second. I'll prepare what I'm saying. Aye? Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you, Ted. Next item is the county attorney items. Ms. Kepka.
I don't have anything today. You all have my report in your packets. I've been answering questions.
Anything for Ms. Kepka?
Nothing to get on you about today.
Do I?
Nothing to get on you about today.
Yeah, I understand that. So, I pay you the $500,000 a year to do, so get on to it.
Thanks for saying that.
I said, if you were listening, okay? And you were. All right. Yeah, we thank you for what you do, and keep us straight. Unless sometimes she does have to get on to us, because we don't know. That's what she's for, and she knows legals in and outs, and, uh, but anyway, thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Well, thank you.
All right. Item 18, Ms. Orange.
You have the green sheet in your pocket that has the claims. The general sum balance after today's claims is $5,461,013.48. As you can see on your comparison chart, we are about $600,000 above this time last year, but less than fiscal year '18 and '19. Claims, early claims, this time total $37,141.47. Total current claims, total $870,251.23. And some of the larger ones are advanced disposal. For March was $35,861.67. Hall Automotive, three Dodge Rams for the Sheriff's Office, $83,914.86. The Southwest Virginia Regional Jail Authority, fourth quarter for fiscal year '21, was $552,513.31. And Windgate Appraisal Service, this was our second billing. They're about 45% complete at this time on the reassessment, $33,000. So, total claims for the month that needs approved is $907,392.70.
On that comparison, or the $5 million or something, that's... We still owe the school, don't we?
Yeah, we have paid the school out of that.
So, everything's paid?
Mm-hmm. We've paid the school CPT, which is usually around $330-ish, and the claims are all out of this. So, as far as big chunks, they've all come out for the year.
You had a chance to look at, uh, any comments or questions for our county administration. Not much to approve of the plans that's presented to you. So, room, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ditchman made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scrubby, second. Any discussion? I'll prepare what I'm saying. Aye? Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Do you think this line is responsible?
I do, just give me one second. I forgot to send Mr. Dishman a text. Um, under miscellaneous, we need to appropriate and transfer some money for the school operating budget that was approved at the January meeting in with the grants. So, that amount is $23,904, and we would need to appropriate and transfer from 3-001-18990-0014, Regional Jail Reconciliation, to 3-001-93000-0002, School Operating Fund, in the amount of $23,904.
Do we do the transfer and appropriate in the same boat? Need a motion to do that?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ditchman made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herrick, second. Any discussion? I'll prepare what I'm saying. Aye? Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Do you have anything else?
I do not. And I just sent Mr. Dishman a text, so he's on his way. That's my phone.
That's okay. Let's just take a short break. He gets here, we have nothing else. Unless y'all want to go ahead and do the comments. You want to do that?
I think we should.
Let's go do the comments. We get that down anyway. Yeah. All right, let's go ahead and do, um, down to item 20, comments, requests, regulations, asking for the board, so... Do anything to close session. We're done for you.
I'm good. Yeah, I'd just like to thank the staff and everybody, all the work that you do, and, um, I know you talked about the COVID money, and Danny, as chairman, you might want to mention more about it. You know, we're on the Linn Whisco board, and there was some discussion about, you know, the businesses. And it was mentioned earlier during the citizens' expression period, uh, there are actually links that are on the county website and on the EDA website to help our small businesses, so I hope people will take advantage of that. The other counties are doing that. The last round or two of, I guess, Scott County, uh, maybe didn't take the advantage, uh, maybe as they should have, but we'd like to see them do that.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Herrick?
I don't have anything, but I'd like to recognize a member of our county, Walter Manus, the Pumpkin Man. You know, he's going to be retiring, or he is retired. Uh, he's been in that business, I think, for over 30 years. You know, and he, uh, not, not... He didn't only focus on our county, it's our whole region. You know, there was kids that cut to his farm from everywhere, you know, and, uh, you know, like to recognize him and his accomplishments, hoping good health and a good retirement.
I've been to his farm many times. It's a pleasure to go there. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
All right. Uh, Ms. Ed.
Well, just let you do a little summary of things I've done during the last month. Of course, I still get calls about VDOC issues and water, and I participated on a tourism panel. Our second meeting, we met at the Creation Kingdom Zoo here in Gate City, which was a very enjoyable day. And I attended a day and a half supervisors forum with other state supervisors and other county employees, which was very informative. And then, of course, I already mentioned about the schools, which I've got a complaint about no air conditioning in the gymnasiums. And that is specifically what I've done.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Scrubby?
Uh, just want to say thanks to all the staff. I'm going to go marshals comments about that. I don't have anything specific or anything. I just appreciate everybody working through this. And the COVID money, the CARES Act money, we have done some really good things with that. And I do want to say, you know, there are, uh, there's a grant now out there for small businesses that they need to take advantage of, and, uh, that will be, that's available now. And I encourage you, if you're a small business owner, go and take advantage of that, because that's, that's a good thing to help you, you know, in these COVID times, I guess is what I can say. But that's all I have.
Only I want to say thank the staff. We get to this budget here, who've, uh, been on the budget committee, it's been interesting, so we can see everything in a few minutes, so we'll get into that, so... Anyways, take about a...
I have one other thing.
Okay, sorry.
Um, I need authorization to sign the grant documents for the body worn cameras.
All right. Need a motion to authorize her to sign that grant?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Scrubby made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ditchman, second. I'll prepare what I'm saying. Aye? Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. So, let's take about whatever time the tradition gets here. We'll get started back when it gets here. Call meeting back to order, and, uh, being item 19, Mr. Mike Dishman from the PSA is here, so Mr. Dishman, I would...
Say. Hi, everybody.
Good morning.
Good to see you. Appreciate you giving me your ring check last month. Couldn't make it, but it's good to be here. And I hope you got my, I assume you got my report in your, in your packet, and, um, I don't know, I can't get close enough to this podium with this, uh, this thing.
Sorry.
Well, uh, it's a 50th anniversary of the PSA, and, um, just became aware of that some time back. It's, and I'm a, I love history, and I just enjoy kind of reading into some of the history of the PSA and Scott County. And, um, Scott County PSA originated with the, uh, in 1969 with the Scott County Planning Commission, um, did a comprehensive study conducted by Thompson and Litton about the present and future needs of the county and their water and sewage facilities, and, um, it was, this study was funded by what was then called FHA, former Home Administration. Now, it's USDA Rural Development, which I talk about a lot, because they're a major funding partner of ours. Um, and, and one of the major conclusions of that study was that the county should create a Water and Sewer Authority. They originally called it Water and Sewer Authority, and later the name was changed. But, uh, you may recognize some of the gentlemen that were, and, uh, I'm sorry, but back then, there weren't too many ladies on these commissions and boards, but the gentlemen on that Plan Commission, you might recognize Joe Hart, RJ Carter, Phil McConnell, Joseph Roger Brown, N.W. Kilgore, Howard Elliott, Earl Warren, Joe Durden. That's one name I heard about the Edspeak a lot, Joe Durden. He was county agent in Washington County, extension agent. Glenn Osburn, Otis Lawson, Kenneth Fannett. And in '71, the Board of Supervisors created the Water and Sewer Authority. And the supervisors at that time were BW Frazier, AD Baker, Cecil Fletcher, Melvin Benton, R.A. Farmer, Sam McCall, Clarence Gross, and Katie Pierce. Does anybody recognize any of those folks from 50 years ago?
I do.
Um, and then the original members of our board, the PSA board, what's now PSA, were R.A. Farmer, Ray Hodges, Edward Robbins, Malcolm Sims, and Gene Dishman. The, and the very first project undertaken by the PSA was to extend water up Duffield-Pattensville Road, uh, in 1972, and then that was completed in 1974. And it's amazing what it cost, $85,000. I hate to see what that would cost today. Um, but, you know, how much was probably a gallon of gas and 25 cents? But in 2000, the modern era of the PSA began, and, um, when the Board of Supervisors changed our name to the PSA, and we acquired the Duffield Development Authority, I'm sure most of you remember that. It was a, a big time, a couple of years there. The D. Duffield Development Authority Water and Sewer Systems merged in with the PSA, and it took an act of the General Assembly, but they dissolved the Moxon Gap Sanitation District, and that was merged into the PSA. Uh, and from there, um, under, under the leadership of mostly Dan Danko and Jack Bush, too, was the PSA took off. Um, but some quick facts on PSA that you, the folks might be interested in is, we currently provide service to 5,600 customers, a population of approximately 13,000. Uh, that includes waste and, and plus wastewater service to about a little over 1,000 customers. We have, um, production capacity of 1.5 billion gallons per day of water, uh, plus we have purchase contracts totaling a little over 300,000 gallons a day from, uh, Bloomingdale in Tennessee, Russell County, Towne Gate City, and Washington County Service Authority. We have sewage treatment capacity of almost 1.7 billion gallons a day, and we maintain about 300 miles of water main, 25 water pump stations, 20 major water storage tanks, about 20 miles of sewer line, and seven sewage pump stations. We have...
That don't include the town customers, by...
That just, that does not include, yeah, the town, Towne Gate City has their own water system, it does not include them, does not include them, Dan. Um, right. Right, thank you. And, um, the PSA does this currently with 25 full-time employees plus five part-time staff, and we have a very experienced, uh, staff. They average 17 years of experience in, in water wastewater field. What about the PSA's rates and charges? That's, that's the bottom line, right, with most people? What's it going to cost me? Um, the PSA, uh, has been, continues to be an efficient organization. We, uh, we keep our expenses down, and for that reason, we've been able to maintain our rates, uh, relatively low, and compared to, um, the other water and sewage authorities in the Linn Whisco Planting District, we have the lowest rate, significantly lower. Now, there are other, there are lower rates, but those are, you know, towns, and it's hard to compare a town to a PSA, because typically a town, uh, for the water service system doesn't have as much debt, because it's a, it's a relatively confined system. They don't, they, they're built out, they've been built out for years, so, not like us, where we're doing projects to extend service. But among the four authorities that are in, service authorities that are in Linn Whisco, we have by far the lowest rates. But, uh, I may have, there's a lot more history to PSA, but that's it in a nutshell. You, you're familiar with a lot of the projects we've done over the years, but I'll give you a report, a rundown on our water and sewer construction projects now, after I get a We have recently completed some projects, and, and as most of you know, we completed the Fairview Waterline Extension Project. Our contractors finished that in last month, with wrapping up the work of what we call Change Order Two, that, where we were able to add some line and, um, extend service. There is still, there is still a Phase Two that's, that's on the drawing board, but it has not been funded. Both our engineering firms did the Fairview project. There were 132 households that signed up for water on Fairview. Out of that, a little over 80 so far, and counting, have activated their PSA accounts to get service. Um, and, uh, we got, uh, most of that funding from Rural Development and, and also from Coldfield Water Development Fund, that's CWDF, and the PDCs, Linn Whisco, I'm praying. Amen. We were recently able to finish, uh, part of a project that involved Alley Valley, Dingus Hollow, Gaswell Road Waterline Extension, so we finished the Gaswell Road portion of that project, and it serves about nine homes. That's off the, um, out in the Boozy Creek area, off our Moxon Gap Water System. Started that this past winter, finished it last month. Funding was from a combination Linn Whisco grant, and then PSA providing equipment and labor engineering. Uh, these projects are currently under construction. Daniel Boone Super, Project Phase One, um, started, uh, not quite two years ago, but construction has been very slow. Um, I'm talking like join pipe every week or two, that's 20 feet. I'm talking like join pipe every week or two. That's twenty feet because of the hard rock. I guess you could kind of predict that because you've got quarry on both ends of that project and about some places like six inches of dirt and then just several feet of bedrock. So it's going very slowly. But we're getting there. So engineers tell me we're about ninety percent done on that project. And had installed fifteen thousand feet as of a couple of weeks ago. Completion is expected later this summer.
How many houses on that field now?
Oh, there are over fifty. I wish I could tell you exactly. I've had that number and forgotten it.
Yeah, I hear there were several.
I know back in January, there were about thirty-four that we could have connected at that time. Now it's grown. You know, there may be closer to eighty houses in... There's a significant number. That goes up about to the hot dog. We're going to be able to serve some houses. And I think there's some churches. There are some churches on the left-hand side, between the railroad and the creek. They'll do that construction. Been a lot of questions about when you're going to do the lines on the other side of the railroad. And those will come last. This project is sustainability. It's an accountability, water loss problem, sustainability. It's doing some things to make our system more efficient. We're adding a well from Natural Town State Park. We're putting generators at water plants. We're installing variable frequency drives to make pumps more efficient, different things like that. And it's a lot of different pieces. And we're pulling it all together. And we hope... And we've done some of it, including... We're also adding a tank upon the bridge at Good Hollow. We've constructed some of that line up to that. Our crew is doing some of the work. Most of the work's done by contract. But I hope this will be done in December. Don't hold me to that.
Just a real question.
Yes, sir.
On the generators?
Yes, sir.
You know, I know about two or three years ago, there was some issues with the generators. What we had on that?
Yeah, we...
If you could do it real quick.
Probably talking about a water outage we had in Duffield, Cliff Mountain.
Yeah. No, I'm talking about the generators for your stations.
Pump station, yes.
When power goes out?
Yes. Yes. Yes, so we have pump... Our pump stations, and I mentioned how many we have. Most of those have a connection for a portable generator. And we have... We've beefed up our portable generator capacity. And we also have very large generators that can actually run our water plants.
So those have been...
This project will... This project will install the facilities, the transfer switches, to be able to connect a portable generator to the water plants and run the water plants.
So those generators have been serviced? I mean exercised, I guess is the right word.
Yes, those generators are serviced and run regularly.
Thank you. That's all that I can say.
Yeah, we don't want to... We don't want water outages. And sometimes it's unavoidable and the power goes out. But that's one of our priorities, is to avoid water outages.
Like, yes, sir.
Thanks for the good question. Funded projects, but not yet under construction. I mentioned Alley Valley, Dingus Hollow. That will serve about twenty-four homes on three different roads. Our crew is doing it. We're obtaining easements and permits for Alley Valley and Dingus Hollow. And Dingus Hollow is next on our crew's list to construct. Working on some other things right now, but they should be getting on Dingus Hollow water line extension in this month. And then Alley Valley after that. Excuse me. And then Robinette Valley, a much bigger project. So Robinette Valley and Hunter's Valley, funded by the Health Department, will serve about eighty homes. We have a little bit of water line on Robinette Valley Road right now where we're going to extend up to what we call the top of the hills. And it starts down the other side to Tennessee. And we stop about right there. Our crew will do the construction in-house for Hunter's Valley West. We have seek-salt bids for Robinette Valley. And that bid opening is scheduled for June the first. Prices are... Have skyrocketed for pipe. We are very worried about what the contractor bids will come in at on Robinette Valley. So our crew might end up doing that construction, too, if we don't have the money for a contractor to do it. We wanted a contractor to do Robinette Valley because we have so many projects for our crew to construct.
So if we're done with that and lay that...
We may have to delay extending the bid opening. The engineers tell me, hoping prices will come down.
What did you say about Hunter's Valley West?
Hunter's Valley West, where our crew, PSA's crew, is going to construct that water line.
And when is that expected to start?
That is scheduled to start after they do Dingus Hollow and Alley Valley. So it's expected to start this fall or late summer. It's expected. That runs from about Big Stone Creek there. We're watering it out and then up and then turn left. Hunter's Valley West goes out there a mile or two till we run out of houses that signed up. We also have plans to do Hunter's Valley East. But we've got to get funding for that. There's a big need for good water on Hunter's Valley East. Taste and color, iron magnes issues, sulfur, bad water there. Nicholsville Water Improvements. This is needed to make much-needed improvements to the wells and treatment plant. Expected to be done later this year. We've done some of the work already, including replacing the meters in town two years ago. We have plans that have been finalized and awaiting approval by DEQ to upgrade the Nicholsville wastewater plant. I'm getting... Well, I won't mention that because it wasn't on TV. And newspaper secret. But I've got letters from DEQ. But we're making happy some. Oh, big project, big, big project. That Mr. Jeter and Mr. Tipton are very interested in and as are the rest of us. Yuma Sewer, Phases Two and Three. And we did Yuma Sewer Phase One. When was that? Ten, eight, ten years ago?
Something like that.
Come by fast. We're going to phase second, third, and fourth phase. Actually, Yuma Sewer got funding. And for Hilton Sewer Phase One, Two, and Three, these projects will be grouped for bids. There'll be, I think, two. There'll be two different bid times. And there'll be four, at least four different contracts. It's a huge project. It's in design. We're getting easements. That's the difficult part. It's extremely difficult on this project, getting easements. Any sewer project is difficult to get easements because once somebody refuses an easement, you have to go redesign the lines to run them a different way. And you can't just run sewer line anyway. It has to go downhill unless you want to put in pump stations. Those are expensive. So both engineering firms are working on this project. And this anticipated start date of August. I have put this down numerous times, but I don't think... I just... I don't know. I hope it happens. But based on our Daniel Boone project and other projects, recent projects, and going to bid and this is the time, it's just going to take some time. Everybody's got to say something about it and prove every little step. So I'm going to say August twenty-one, but I want you to know that it could very well be after that.
August one?
I didn't say we're here to... August twenty-one. August... I didn't put a date, just a month. I'll be happy if it's within the month of August. But it is not going to bid yet. And that's, what, three months away? But, I mean, they can't go... Can't... Really should not go to bid until we get the easements. And we have not got the easements.
Well, one of the folks are working on that. Big part, we know the people are working.
They are working hard on it, yes. They are. And then one you know very well is Upper Cliff Mountain Phase One, otherwise known as the Black Gum Lane Water Extension. And the design is complete. And you've been involved in meetings. Construction is expected to start later this summer with completion anticipated next May. Is that what you all remember?
Yeah.
That's it?
Yeah. And it will make water available to about twenty homes. Got a very good funding from Department of Housing and Community Development, block grant program, as well as from Linnawisco and the Coalfield Water Development Fund. The design is complete, but there is a remaining easement that needed for a pump station. And they're working on it. The engineers are, you know, in contact with the owner.
But we don't expect any problems there? That's... I think that was mentioned at our meeting we had with Linnawisco.
Well, there's been some concern here.
Oh, I understand.
That I can share... I'd prefer to share with you one-on-one.
Okay. We'll talk about it.
All right. And then we're in a several-phase approach to replace old galvanized water line in the town of Webber City. We did one phase, and that was very successful. Cut down on our water loss. And we'll be doing another Phase Two. That's been funded by the Health Department. Not yet funded, but very optimistic about getting funded or several projects, including the big one, and that is Central Scott County Water Project. We have... We made progress since I was here or actually since in the past month. And we got our environmental assessment approved, which means that we can now submit our preliminary engineering report, which is basically an application for funding. So the engineers will be done and submit that this month. It's a huge project on the order of approximately thirty million dollars. It may be done in phases. But if they have the money, if RD has the money, it would be great to be able to do it all in one fell swoop. And they may. There's a multi-community water extension project that we're going to try to get funding for to serve water on Anne Good Cooper Road, Fayland Hollow, Federal Road, and Hunter's Valley East. And we want to provide water and sewer service to Reed Hollow Road. That's got some more preliminary engineering work to be done. And we're not... We're not getting the response on the user agreements that we had hoped for.
Back up on the last one there.
Yes, sir.
Did you say thirty million dollars or thirty thousand dollars?
The search grant was thirty thousand. That just paid for the... Barely paid for the preliminary stuff. So the engineers are now doing their report and looking at doing, refining their cost estimates. There were eighty-some stream crossings in that project. And the agencies... It took a long time to look at those. We actually had to propose aerial crossings to get the project off the start line. So we'll deal with that. Instead of crossing under, we'll go over. And even after we proposed that, it took a while because there was concern with flood plain. What's the flood going to do to those pipes that are suspended over the creek? Most of them will be right at a bridge, so it won't be that noticeable.
Is it hard to get VDoc to allow you to put a pipe along the bridge? Do they have an issue with that, most of us?
We... Yes, it's hard. We have one, and it's at Wild Oak Gap. If you've probably seen it, if you don't look on the... You're going to Bloomingdale. It's on the left-hand side. You may have heard me talk about maybe one day putting one on the bridge there near your house over Clinch. And that would be nice because it's about near impossible to cross under. But the bridge has to be able to support, of course, and has to be insulated. But it's very doable. But... And they have been open to it before. It's not a really easy thing to get approved. And there's other water line extensions that folks want and we need to do. Stanley Valley, Long Hollow Road. And I'm sure I've left out some, but those are two ones that come to mind. But that's all the construction projects. Some more history there I've got for you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
Any questions or comments from the tradition?
Mike, on the sports complex, they're putting sewer line in?
They're varying. It's been in place. It's been ready to use since... For two weeks or more. And now we had to get VDoc permission. Finally got our VDoc permit late mid or late last week. And so they're putting it in the ground.
My question is about the pump. Is the pump... You know, we talked about it was going to boost the pump up bigger so we could tie those houses and stuff on. Is the bigger pump being put in or the small pump?
Yes. No, the... We're going to do our own pump station to serve those houses. And the school board had a certain size pump station to serve the ball fields. And so there was an opportunity to upsize that, to serve everything out there. But the prices just didn't come through the way it was originally presented by the contractor engineer. So it was better for the PSA to just put our own in. And we got to meet with those folks out there. About, I think about eighteen residences out there. We got to meet with them. There's a lot of interest. And we'll be able to do that mostly by gravity, but all together and into a single pump station. So the school's pump station will pump into... Pump all the way down. And then our pump station will pump into the common main. So our crew is... Has put that line in, and it's been ready to use. And we just burying it after we got VDoc permission. They gave us permission to put it in between the road and... Maybe I shouldn't brag about that here. But I was pleased they gave us permission to put it in between the road and the creek. That's unusual.
How much property is needed for a standard pump station?
How much property? You're thinking about Black Gum Lane or...
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, like, Sally's probably, maybe she'll help me out here, she does easements, but I think 50 by 50 approximately.
Been a mile, I don't remember.
Maybe a hundred by a hundred, but approximately 50 by 50.
Anything else? Mike, where I live, there's 10 families below the tracks, don't think between me and PSA Waters or railroad.
Yes.
Do you see that ever happen, there's 10 families there at a half a mile, easy digging river, you know, there's no rock cliffs or anything, do you see that ever?
I, I do, I see it happening. I think there were several on that side that signed up.
There's 10 families, I don't know how many signed up, but there's 10 houses right there over the half a mile, easy hooking and easy digging and-
Yeah, I think that's-
No streams to cross?
Hanging rock Phase Two.
Well, is there an issue crossing the railroad?
Well, it's, it's, it's the expense. I think they were talking like, I believe they needed two crossings, does that sound-
Well, what I'm wondering, see Dunyan, there's a spring down there, well, they should get their town waterfront and they cross the railroad. So whatever they have there, could they use that same area to cross without having to deal with the railroad, it's already there, I mean?
It's, that's a good idea, it's possible.
Well, it's already there from the town, use it, they pump water out of the spring, cross railroad to Dunyan, so, so it's forward deal to railroad.
And they're not using that anymore.
No, no.
Yeah, we like to use those existing conduits.
It's there, somewhere, I'll have to leave where it's at, at least there's-
I'll, I'll mention that to-
Well, it's 10 families and I just spent 500 bucks on mine, getting mine, I was out of water for a week and so I'd love to have, I mean, I can see PSA water line from my house and can't get it, so.
Yeah.
Like, it's not like what you're having to dig through Cliff Mountain something, it's all river bottom stuff, so it'd be easy digging. How deep they bury the plants?
Three feet.
Yeah, it'd be easy digging.
Yeah, all right, well, discuss it with the engineers and-
Look at, see, I can see the PSA water from my house and can't get it.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Well, I had it about two months ago, it saved me a lot.
Yeah.
The line actually stopped right there somewhere.
My forgets my driveway.
My driveway. I had, somebody asked me too about the, you know, the park is on up, our Hanging Rock Park, you know, they, they don't have water, you know, inside that, they might have a well, but it's bad.
They, they used to have water, they've done it more, they cut it off 30 years ago, probably.
That, that was a question, that-
How far is that?
Not far.
About half a mile past the Stony Creek Crossing, where you crossed the, so about half a mile up.
And then there's, there's a few houses there too.
There's four houses right there across the creek that cross-
You know where our line goes to the last house? How far is it to the park?
To the park, it's right at a mile.
Oh, it is a mile?
Yep. There's four houses-
A mile doesn't sound like a lot to start the lane.
Well, there's four houses, as soon as you cross Little Stony Creek, there's four houses right there too, and I know two of them need, they have bad water, so crossing the creek, that's another issue, but-
Sounds like cautionary for the PSA crew.
Yeah. All right.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Yeah.
All righty, anything else before we adjourn to our budget? If not, we will adjourn the meeting and the next regular meeting will be June 2nd, I think it is, but anyway, we're going to adjourn to the work, budget workshop here, so with that, we'll move on to the meeting.